With committee of the whole, first up is Public Safety 2.1 firefighter wages.
So basically what we require is a resolution for the November firefighter wages in the amount of $3,988. As you're aware, the reports do come directly through the reports or through the CAO reports, so those aren't included. So we're going to be asking for the revision to the report on Wednesday.
Okay. I just have one. Could we have attached at some point the listing of where the fire calls were?
Those are what I put in the CAO report. We'd switch that around.
Oh, okay. Okay, no problem. I read your report and I didn't see that.
Because it wasn't in the last report.
There you go.
I wasn't seeing it because it wasn't in there.
All right. So we'll have a resolution on Wednesday. Very good. We'll move on then. Item number three, planning and development, 3.1, the RM of Kelsey Vandenberg subdivision.
So this was an issue that we wanted to have a little bit more discussion on. I think it's fair to say that everybody was in favor of development. However, we did do some additional work and we did get some information. Right now, we need to discuss the infrastructure and improvements moving forward. We've got a waste disposal site that's near its life end. We've also got a lagoon that needs attention. We have our recreation facilities. We look after the cemetery. Those are all services that are provided by the town of the Paw and people pay a user fee for. Right now in the RM, there is 50 residential lots available. This subdivision will create another 50 residential lots. So we have a potential here for 100 additional residential lots. So I'm not saying anybody would be against this or for it, and I'm keeping that opinion to myself. However, I do believe we need to move forward for something formal before we permit this to move on. We've been verbally told that there's arrangements for taking the waste to Wanless or that we're working on the regional landfill. But we need to address these issues. We need to have a plan in place. This is 100 additional lots. We also have our own lots that need to be developed eventually, too. Are we prepared to take on this much more?
Counsel? Counsel Ryan?
Yeah, I'm wondering with regard to this future development and with the need for a new lagoon, we have things in process. Would this also be considered as a driving force to get those things done? We currently have an agreement with the RM with regard to we provide those services, I believe. Now, do we have a maximum number of units that we service, or is that open-ended? Because if it is open-ended, then that's an agreement. We either have to go back, and I believe it was suggested, we go back and review it. Because I'm kind of reluctant to use that issue as a barrier to economic development in our area. We're part of the friendship accord. We're doing these things. We want to do it. The other thing is, I wonder if we want to allow them to, well, and I don't know that we allow them or not, as much as it may take them longer to get it, but we need to look at it in terms of what's good for the region. How can we use that to leverage quicker progress on making decisions and making these things happen with regard to our major projects? If we say no, we send out a very, very clear signal to business, to everyone around here, that we are not open for business. We're in fact closing it off because we say, well, we can't accommodate you. Our infrastructure is insufficient. We're not denying that. I just don't think that this would necessarily be the way or the time to send that signal. The other thing, question is, of course, is we know how long it took to develop some of our lots. So the development of those lots could be a rather lengthy window. So if we balance it against that, it may be not be the time to say no to new development and economic development. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure.
I don't think anybody is saying no to any development. We just don't have a proper plan in place. And if we say yes, let's go ahead with this, and we don't have the proper, like, testing done and the proper, like, someone needs to find out if we can. A couple years ago, when we had the broad development here, we basically said, this is going to be it. We're going to reach our capacity. So that's the study that needs to be done, is can we do this? And who's going to pay for that study? And maybe that's a conversation that needs to happen with the RM. They may be 100% okay with doing that, moving forward. But we need something that tells us if we can, take them or not.
Are we not revisiting our agreements with the RM and that sort of thing right now? Has any of this stuff been brought into the conversation?
No.
Okay. Well, then, I think that's something we definitely need to bring into the conversation is these additional 55 lots.
And I do agree with Brian. This might be some leverage to get us some additional funding, saying, here is this potential for this much more.
For sure.
I just think we need to have to sit down, do a study, get on the same page.
I think everybody's on the same page that we want it to go forward, but it's just the proper things need to be put in place about it.
Just one question.
Yeah?
How big are these lots? I'm looking at the pictures and everything.
Two acres.
Like, how many acres has each lot?
Two acres.
Right around two.
But those aren't all, oh yeah.
There's different phases of the lots.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
There's a second, third attachment, a little survey.
Because I thought anything under two acres, you have to have a septic tank, not a septic field.
It says in their application, yeah, septic field, that they would have septic field for the new development.
No, under two acres is septic tank.
It's holding tank.
Yeah.
Which means regular pump over.
Yep.
Colin?
So do we have to formalize a meeting with the RM to go over this? Because I agree also what Brian was saying, there's 50 lots, another 50 lots, there's 20-plus lots of the lake. There's still lots of wood acres, too. They're not going to be filled in the next six months. So I think we have time, but we certainly need to sit down with them and come up with who's going to, how are these going to come online?
Okay. Andrew, anything you want to add?
I echo those thoughts. I mean, yeah, it seems futile to say no. It seems more sensible to say no. That sounds great, but let's talk about how these things come online. It's one thing to register your subdivision. It's another thing to produce construction and start producing things that require the use of infrastructure. That agreement should be discussed upfront, whether it's T-agreement proper or whether it's the mechanism to how you come forward to an agreement.
Okay. So we're all on the same page, so let's see if we can get a meeting organized. I guess you deal with the administrators over there. What was the other ones you were going? Yes, Brian?
I noticed in the letter from Brett Mack, it has November 2nd, 2015, has the date we were to respond by. Now, and I believe, did we ask for an extension on that?
Yes, we've been in regular contact after each meeting that we've had in respect to this discussion. We've been in contact and they were fine with waiting.
Okay, that's what I got. So I guess my question is, is if we're just going to move it on to another process, should we put a timeline on that process? Because if it just drags out for another year, then it's...
Well, let's find out what she can learn first, you know? And if it's going to be a long time, then we can put a timeline on it and say we've got to move it up.
I believe we need to move as soon as possible, because we don't want to hold them up either.
Right.
So I don't, can't put a date on it yet, but probably can shortly. All right. Anything else on that item? Okay, we'll move on to finance and administration, 4.1, Kelsey Rec Partners in Leisure Program.
The Partners in Leisures program is a program for funding that we've been jointly doing with the RM of Kelsey also. This is a regular funding agreement with the Province for Reparational Services for grants for the next four years in the amount of $30,180. If the RM's contribution stays the same or increases, this will have no effect on the dollar amount given, which is $30,180. However, if it decreases, they will have to reevaluate. So basically, what we're asking is a resolution of council to approve us to move forward with signing this funding agreement and then forwarding it on to the RM of Kelsey for their approval.
Is it $30,000 over four years or $30,000 each year?
Each year.
Each year, okay.
Yeah.
Anybody have a problem putting a resolution forward for that? I don't think so. Okay, we'll do that. All right, 4.2, handy van.
The handy van is looking at a grant application for the purchase of a new handy van. There's, I'm sure, as everybody knows around this table, has been under repair several times, and it's now time to purchase a new one. So they're applying through the Small Communities Transportation Fund Program. And because we are basically the sponsor, we have to sign off on that grant application. So we would require a resolution for that. They have put money aside in each year also in their budget for this purchase.
What's the, is there a breakdown of funders for the grant? Like, is it 50/50? Is it semi-funded?
This is a proposal basically that goes through the gas tax, the municipal gas tax. I honestly don't know what their share is of it.
I think it's 50/50.
I think so, too, yeah.
Do they have roughly 50% of what?
They have 50, yeah.
They do?
Yeah, they put money away.
No, that's awesome.
So they're not going to be asking for any?
No, they're not asking for it. We just have to sign off on their grant application.
We've put money away for them, like, each year.
Yes.
Yeah, and they're sure.
And so have they. And there's enough money there to get a new van, that's what...
So it's your 50.
Okay, Brian?
Just for clarification, am I correct? It seems to me I heard somewhere that if that organization were to, because we're their sponsor, if that organization were to incur a deficit at the end of the year, that deficit is the town's deficit.
Correct.
So anything like this, it's not just, you know, if it all works out fine, then it's not an issue. If something goes sour on it, then we get the bill as council, kind of thing. So I guess my concern with what we got from them was it was sort of incomplete in terms of the budget side. Would have been nice to know the answers to questions we asked tonight in advance.
By all means, like, if that's something you want in the future, give me a...
Well, just the simple one line. But I don't think it's our responsibility to tell another organization how, you know, if you go to the bank, you usually prepare yourself when you go to see the loans officer. So why not give us the same courtesy?
I think what they're saying is they've put their bids out, they've followed the guidelines of staff, they have their money in place. All we need to do is sign the resolution, saying that they're applying for this grant money. So if they don't get the grant money, they don't get the van. They couldn't afford it.
Right. But I didn't read, when it said putting the bids out, I didn't read into that, that they had done all these other things that were in place, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, 4.4, finance report, to September 30th. Oh, I'm sorry, KRC Facilities, 40 hours, my mistake.
This is a request from the Recreation Director as it relates to the closure of recreation facilities at noon on December 24th and at noon on New Year's Eve. New Year's Eve, we're not closed in other facilities. However, we do find that we have absolutely zero people coming to our facilities for use. Staff will still be working a shift, like those that are scheduled to work later in the day. They'll be coming in at 8:00 and still doing their entire shift, but the facilities will be closed. It's going to actually be a cost savings to the town, and it just coincides with no one using the facility on New Year's Eve. So we need a resolution for the closure of facilities.
Alan?
Just a quick question, especially as it refers to the Wellness Center, because I think it says it's member-supported. Can we start tracking this year, how many people come at those periods? Is it formally open to new on Boxing or whatever, Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve, and no one comes? Then next year, we know that maybe we just shouldn't be open at all on those days.
I'm sure we can figure that out, Alan, just from last year, who uses the facilities on those days also?
Yeah, they have.
Okay, so then we'll have two years' worth of numbers. Perfect. Okay, any other questions? Okay, do a resolution. And 4.4, finance report.
There's two parts.
It's the same thing. We talked about them both at the same time, didn't we?
We kind of did.
I thought we did.
Well, we're saying the only other one is that the pool would be closed the entire day on the 27th, which is not normal.
No.
And on the 28th, that's going to be a stat day for the arena, so that won't be open.
Pardon me?
On the 27th, no one uses the pool anyway. I anticipate anybody's going to be using it through the holidays. So basically, they're saying it's not paying off the wages. And on the 28th, a stat day at the arena, because we're working, yes. So they would use, the arena would be closed on the 28th, and you would be using the stat day for that day for the employees. Again, cost savings versus usage.
Okay, I just want to see what days of the week those are, Sunday.
It's a Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday.
It was a Sunday, Monday.
Yeah, sorry, we're doing it Saturday.
Okay. Sorry, I thought it was, we're doing one resolution for both, but I see the difference. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, we can put it into one.
Okay. Everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
Let's do the finance report now.
Okay, we can finally move on to that.
All right.
I've asked Jovi to be present to speak on the financial statement. So I guess basically I just have changed up the financial statement that you used to be getting before. I've changed up into a little bit different format, and I was just looking for feedback or any...
Excuse me? We're recording this, so could we use a mic? Because if people are going to view it after the fact, then we should be able to hear you.
Have a seat in the background, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to...
So as I was saying, I guess I was just looking for any feedback or if you were able to get the proper information from the report, or if there was any questions in regards to the report, any further information you'd like to see on it.
Is this budgeted year-to-date?
Year-to-date.
These are budgeted year-to-date numbers?
Year-to-date figures.
And then these are budgeted, or these are actuals to date?
Actuals to date, yeah.
To September 30?
To September 30.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, the date to where budget, they were...
Yeah. Yeah, at September 30.
Brian? I was going to ask first to process, to create this document, have you been able to structure our system such that you just press a button and it creates this report? Or is there a lot of manual labor to create a...
No, there was a lot of time put into setting up the original document.
Right.
Now that I have the document set up, all I need to do is basically print the exact same reports that were coming out before, plug those numbers in, and it all populates itself.
And it generates. So going forward, getting it as a quarterly or monthly or something wouldn't be a great hardship?
No. No, it's essentially probably 15 minutes of data entry and maybe 15 minutes of creating reports.
Oh, okay.
I just have to wait for them to cycle through, to run the reports, so...
Yeah, I did find it very informative and helpful as a council, for sure.
Any questions on it?
This is great. Now, going forward, can we, like, third week of every month?
Get a current one? Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Definitely.
But we have one, like, how current is current? We have one to the end of November?
Second or third week every month, we should be getting that month table.
That's my hope, yeah.
Okay, all right. Good. Chad?
I can't remember. We don't get the RCMP numbers until partway through. Oh, yeah, because they're a June-to-June thing.
There was some, there's some invoices that unfortunately are still going to the previous CFO's inbox. So once I put all the report, or all of the data into this report, I was able to determine which invoices were missing. And we were missing some from the RCMP. So that's, the amount seems like it's a little bit low in areas sometimes. It's just missing invoices.
Okay.
And those invoices were just processed in this last period and we're including here.
Yeah.
Great. Any other comments?
I do like the graphs. Just saying. I know that's something you guys always like seeing, but I do like seeing that.
I like pie charts.
Pie charts.
No, this is, this is a big corner we've turned here. This is great. Very good to have. Easy to follow. Good stuff. Okay, anything else?
So are you guys okay with approving this as a financial statement?
Yes. Okay, 4.5, driver's license upgrade program.
Right now, we have a policy about graduated driver's licenses. In our current policy, it specifically refers to a section of the collective agreement with QB. This is pretty much a policy that's over, like, throughout the entire town of the Paw, including management and staff at the Paw Airport. So all we're saying is we want to revision a resolution that we revise this policy to remove specific reference to one collective agreement and not the entire one. So it's basically deleting a section that says part this of the collective agreement, because it covers everybody.
Right.
Doesn't change the policy.
Any comments? Okay. 4.6, accommodation tax by law.
Meeting was held, and Jim, you may want to refer to this or go a little further on this, but there were changes and recommendations made to increase the destination marketing fund from 15% to 25%, and recreational infrastructure to decrease to 25% from 35%. Also, part of the revisions after meeting was to establish a destination marketing committee, however, the terms to be reviewed and recommended by the committee.
Right.
It's my understanding that was what we were wanting to move forward to, to present to the province.
That's exactly what we want to move forward to. So changes are in green. Everybody's had a chance to go over them. There's very few changes, but we sat down, myself and Jennifer, sat down with two of the operators and decided we weren't going to get up until we had a deal. And this is what we're bringing forward.
Okay, so, so, okay, so now we're 25% to the destination marketing granting program fund, whatever.
Say that again.
It's not a granting program fund anymore.
It's not?
No. You change it back to destination marketing.
Destination marketing, correct.
But it still will be handed out like grants now?
Nope, nope.
It's going back to the destination marketing committee?
Right.
Yeah.
So how are they going to review?
And to be handed out as grants.
Yeah, they'll hand it out as a grant though, no?
It'll be brought, they'll make application for the funding, and the committee will make recommendations from that. Correct? That's what I understand it.
That the committee would be kept at three to five people?
Yeah.
And that the two hoteliers would be part of that group, and that the main goal would be overnight stays, generating overnight stays.
There's a big olive branch from them as well, in terms of hours that are put into different projects, whether they be printing or whatever, that they would, they'd look after taking on some of that. So this moves us forward.
So, okay, so the destination marketing committee would be made up of the two main hoteliers?
Right.
And one to three other citizens at law?
Correct.
Is that in the bylaw? I didn't see that.
Yeah, no, I didn't see that in there.
That's what it's saying, that's going to be the terms of reference to be reviewed and recommended by that committee.
So when you look at others...
Yeah, I'm just thinking, sorry, Alan, just one second to finish my train of thought. Don't you expect the province will come back and say, well, you have to identify within your bylaw what the makeup of the destination marketing committee is?
So when we looked at other, like, again, if you look at Thompson's?
Right.
Their bylaw's very clear, and it says it goes to these three reserve funds.
Right.
That's all it talks about. So everything's dealt with there. So if you ever have to change your bylaw down the road, you're not opening everything up again.
I got no problem with it not being there, just in terms of process. I was just, you know, thinking, we've gotten lots of questions back and requirement for more detail and whatever, and to me, it would seem that that would be when they ask, but maybe not. If they're good with that, I'm cool. I'm not saying it's got to be in there, I'm just pointing out that it's not there.
Brian?
Yeah, I agree with Randy, with Andrew, rather, that issue of it not being there, flagged with the two. But I think there's an advantage, given the challenges going forward with this, to leave, give it some flexibility to get that committee together, draft the terms of reference, and move the thing forward so it's an actual working, well-greased organization, so it moves forward and gets the dollars out into our community and creating some economic development, which is critical to the whole process, I think. One other thing, though, with regard to, and I believe it's on the second page at the top, the green section, destination marketing reserve fund, where they, the second last line, they say, for example, and they refer to hockey tournaments, homecoming celebrations, and sort of that's it. I would suggest that perhaps we could also include business conferences, events, and the like, too, because anything that's going to create economic development and generate some dollars in our community is where you want to see it go. And the business element is, it's not just sports, I guess is what it struck me as.
That's providing more examples of what could be done.
Yeah, just broadens it.
Okay. We can do that.
Not that I want to beat a dead horse, but I guess my concern is, one of the problems, I think, last time that I heard from people, was that nobody really knew how to apply for the money. There was some confusion with, you know, like, people would write a letter to the town, or they would send a request. So I guess, I don't know, I would just, I don't know, maybe it's the control freak in me, but I would just like to have some sort of an idea of how they plan on, I guess, marketing that there's money available, and how exactly are they going to accept requests from people? Like, are they going to have a grant application that's available, like a lot of the other municipalities? Do you go on their website and it's right there? You can fill it out and submit it? Are they going to take, like, letters of intent and then discuss it? Like, I just would like to see some sort of process, or have an idea of what their process is going to be.
There was some legwork that was done on this already, and I think you were part of it with creating some sort of a application. And I think that's valuable information that could be shared with that committee. I think there's no reason to reinvent that wheel. It wasn't broken. And I think that's something that they would seek as being very valuable.
Brian?
Just one other comment about this. The way I perceive this committee, when struck going forward, it's got to be a working committee in that it's facilitating and interfacing between people with good ideas and great things that need some cash to get it done that's going to have an economic development and marketing segment to it. So this committee would be that kind of a clearinghouse, and part of their task, I think, is going out and networking with those groups and people that do these kinds of things, so that they're promoting that way and how do they help, rather than sit and wait for people to come and ask for it. Sometimes you've got to get out there and sell it first, and then when the lineup gets too long, you'll worry about it. But it seems that wasn't a problem in the past, because it failed.
Anything else?
I have strong reservations about this, because we're going back to the same system that didn't work.
Okay, that's...
Before.
Okay, go ahead and say what you need to say.
Well, it's just, it was a grant program before, made up of a committee of citizens of the Paw, and it didn't work. So what safeguards are we putting in place to ensure that it is going to work? I echo what Crystal was saying. What's the process going to be? There's no process that's being set up here. All it's saying is that we're setting up a committee, and that's what was done last time, and none of that money got handed out. And what did get handed out got clawed back from the Ombudsman. So I just, I don't see, I don't see what we're doing different to make this process any better.
So, four and a half years I've been on this merry-go-round, and we set up a committee. With the only expense out of the destination marketing committee was a lunch we bought for $71 to get everybody together. Only way we could get the committee together was to buy them lunch. No one's interested in being a chair. No one's interested in being vice-chair. Nobody wants to take minutes. Nobody wants to record anything, okay? They just wanted to be a think tank. And at the council the day decided, no, that's not good enough. You need to have all these processes there. And so that was the last time they met. It was the last time we ever tried to give away any of this money. So we tried other methods of trying to figure ways, well, we can get, you know, $5,000 this group, maybe $3,000 this group. So, and all throughout that entire process, the people from within the industry, the ones who were supplying us with the funding to go ahead and do it, said, we just want to be part of the process. We just want to be part of the process. You know, not say we have to, we have to be at the wheel of the ship 24/7, but we want to be part of the process. So we found a way to move that forward, and now we're saying, well, maybe we don't want to have a committee. So, you know, I just, I'm almost to the point where I would just highly recommend we cancel the whole damn thing and get buddy their money back and move on. Because this is just the most ridiculous merry-go-round I have ever, ever been on. A little frustration on my part, for sure, but this is a fund that is working fine in every other community that operates it except here. We're using the same process, the same avenues, but somehow, we can't seem to, we're just like, we look silly. We look silly.
I don't have a problem with the committee. Like, I think that that's a good way to take some of the political spin out of it. Like I said, I would just, like Chad said, right, there was a committee set up before, and their, I guess their processes, the processes of the committee didn't work. So it would be nice to know, I guess, what's going to be done differently this time to make sure that it's successful.
Last time, there was, didn't have industry input, right? And I've had this discussion with some of the councils, is that the people that are in the industry knows what, knows what works and what doesn't work. And we can say hockey tournaments, hockey tournaments are a great example. If you're talking bank for your buck. If you're going to set up a bird watching tour, that's great, you might get five people, but you laugh, but those are the ideas that come forth. So you need to have industry people involved. And we didn't, and that's why it didn't work, right? And that's why, and then you get hogtied, for lack of a better term. How is this going to get expended? Well, we're better off maybe doing nothing than taking a step forward, right? So it goes back to, it doesn't matter whether I'm a counselor or a hotel director, right? Like, heads and beds is what drives everything. Not just because it drives our business, hotels pay taxes based on revenue, right? And, and they're huge drivers. Between the two hotels, there's probably excess of three hundred thousand a year in taxes, right, to the town. This whole tax structure is based on putting more people in, in hotel rooms. So we sell more hotel rooms, we get more tax dollars. Not just for this fund, but for the other reserve funds, right? Now, I can't speak for her, but in our meeting, he's down a thousand room nights a share. And we're down quite substantially as well, right? So, and then we're going to get a committee, and what happened last time, we'll get the committee, we will get very little input from any of the hoteliers. And then we'll have all these great ideas. And we're like, well, we can tell you what works and what doesn't work. And what's frustrating from our side, I guess, is that we've made the mistakes. We made them ten years ago, five years ago, you know? Sure, we built ice shacks and tried half tours, doesn't work. So, and, and, and our last CDC person, that was one of the first things out of his mouth. Well, why don't you have ice shacks and you run tours, it'll be great, there'll be thousands of people. I'm like, that's not going to happen, right? I've made that mistake, I'm not going to do it again. So that's why the committee doesn't work, because you didn't have that input. And that's one example, but I, I mean, that could give you half a dozen more. And it, and then, then you're, as a councillor, I think you're in a real jammer, sitting on tens of thousands of dollars. Well, what are we going to do? Well, we got to do something, and then you make mistakes, right? For the DMF, for me, it's really clear if you, if you focus on what generates overnight stays. That doesn't mean it has to be sports related, it could be like Brian said, it could be conferences, it could be anything. But the beauty of that is it's quantifiable. So if someone came and did an application, we're going to do this, we're going to get a hundred people in town, you're going to get a hundred room nights in the next three days between all the hotels in town? Great. You can go back after and you can actually check that, right? Whereas a lot of the things put forward are not. And that goes back, the committee didn't have enough industry involvement, and that's what happened. So I, I mean, I, I don't think it's going to work this time.
Andrew?
I agree a hundred percent with Ellen. Like, I, I've been here for the full gamut, like you. And, and I think that probably if you really step back far enough, if you put the entire Destination Marketing Fund into the hands of the, of a local hotel association, for lack of a better term, to handle it, who, they are going to be the absolute biggest motivated people, the largest motivated group to make sure that money goes out to other groups to generate additional stays in hotels. And in turn, that will cause economy to happen. And it's taken me four and a half years to get around with that one, or whatever it's been here, you know? But I mean, I, I don't, I don't have any reservations at all. I mean, presumably, the expectation is that this Destination Marketing Committee is going to produce some kind of report that, so that they can show that in fact this money did go from, and accountants will make sure that that happens. If you guys are collecting the tax and it's already there in the bylaw, there's got to be a paper trail, a trail that's produced that simply shows that, that this fund were allocated to these groups and they did these things and away it went. I'd happy, be happy to see one councillor sit on that committee just to simply report back and say, yeah, oh, it's going well. As proof in the pudding.
I believe the fatal flaw has been not including them in the, in the process.
He's said that right from the start.
You just, I just refuse to believe it for the longest time.
Well, and like, again, my, I don't have any problem with the committee or who the committee is made up of or anything like that, it's just like, like I said, like, what's the process going to be?
And it's less of a concern for me because I'm pretty sure that if they have a pot of whatever it's at right now, eighty thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars sitting in front of them, waiting to go out to generate stays in beds and, and create economy in the pot, I'm pretty sure they're not going to let it stall because they can't figure out who's going to do the minutes.
Okay.
Pretty sure that won't happen. Maybe.
Maybe.
No, no, that's-
That, that's true? Okay, whatever, right?
Yeah.
My point is, is that I'm, at this point, I'm entirely happy that we just have somebody sitting there as a, as an assurance that in fact we have a direct line, just like we do with all of our other external committees, where we can say, yeah, no, I attended the recycling center meeting this month, we've seen the financials, the money's being spent efficiently and productively and off the coasts. Good. I don't want to, this needs to go.
So just by way of consensus then, who's in favor of sending us off to the province for one more look? Okay, so we're, we're rolling. All right, perfect, thank you very much. Thank you very, very much. Four point seven.
Just hang on. Is it going to go? Like, is there another change that we should be making?
I honestly can't see.
Okay.
We have to wait to hear back from them.
I've been dealing with the problems on this, they have not been forthcoming in helping. In the very least, and today an email went out saying either help us or please tell us something that counts.
I agree.
Because it's basically, we've been doing trial and error through this whole process.
It's been-
Um, it's, we won't help you with advice, but send it to us when you're done and then we'll tell you what's wrong.
So there's no, no eye pokers that we can see in this when we send it out? We're not expecting to get something back that says, what are you thinking?
We would hope not.
Okay. Good. Tired of hearing that.
Now, that's all I'm going to think about for the next while, what are you thinking?
And our biggest concern is when they don't want to email back your questions or the answers to your questions. It's like, can we pick up a phone call? No. No, we'd like that to be lined writing, and that doesn't seem to happen.
No, and that's, that's been a huge issue.
Yeah.
It's just putting things in writing. All right, uh, four point seven then, the Friendship Center?
Um, no response has been received as it relates to any kind of update or presentation. Basically, all our other organizations that come to us requesting money provide their budget. We've had nothing yet. How do you want us to move forward with this?
Okay.
I would say, let's ask them for their budget. Like, let's just tell them you have-
We have, and we've received nothing in return, we, we're chasing here. So it makes me concerned, I know this is very important and on their table.
Yeah. Can we send something a little bit more?
I don't think they're understanding.
Well, hectic sounding and just say like, listen, we're about to do budget deliberation so far-
And if you don't have it by this date, we-
Yeah, exactly.
Brian?
I think too, if we're asking them, get clarification on who is the, who actually operates or owns Oscar's Place? Because as I understood it, it was originally structured under an independent board. Now, not under the Friendship Center. Now, unless somehow they've moved it over under, under their umbrella or something.
They did. What happened was the-
They do that. Because then I have even greater concerns because I think that organization has other matters of, and issues on its plate that are quite serious. So in terms of, presenting them with dollars-
Oscar's Place had its own board and it didn't quite pan out, I guess. So the Friendship Center took over Oscar's Place and said, we will, we will run Oscar's Place, we will use our board as, as their board to make decisions and we will, you know, apply for grants under the Friendship Center, et cetera, et cetera. And then what happened was the Friendship Center went under third-party management. So because Oscar's Place was under their umbrella, Oscar's Place wasn't allowed to apply for funding and that sort of thing until they got out of third-party management, which has just recently happened.
Just recently.
So, so what they've done, basically, there's two organizations, but the same people are running both?
Pretty much, yes. Like, Oscar's Place has its own staff, aside from the staff at the Friendship Center. Like, it has its own shelter manager and its own employees who run the shelter during the emergency hours of operations at nighttime. But the Friendship Center board is the Oscar's Place board, pretty much. And it would be them that signs the checks and that kind of stuff.
I guess in terms of clarification from them is, does an Oscar's Place corporation exist or not?
I think we just answered that, I'm pretty sure.
It doesn't, it doesn't exist.
Okay. Okay. Now, that means that Oscar's Place board has disbanded.
Quite some time ago.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm not talking about they just disappeared and did nothing. I'm talking about formally shut it down.
It's done. It was shut down, the Friendship Center took over operation legally through, through the, I believe, a co-agreement between the federal government and the provincial, I think it was-
Yeah, provincial.
And that was three years ago, I believe, that-
Yeah, probably like five or six years ago.
So, but, but the point is, is that I think, I think, I think we're looking at two different things here. I don't, I don't necessarily think they're so much looking for, you know, piles of money from us. What they're looking for is some unity in going forward and applying for a grant on middle of January. I think January eighteenth, that number's pops into my head.
They asked for like money.
That's what we asked for.
They asked for money.
I understand, I understand. So I, but I just think there's a little misconception here, a little, so if we can get that-
Basically, we asked like we would from any other organization, what is your plan? What's your budget? What do you need so we can review it at budget time?
Because I know when Renee was here, she said, yeah, I just didn't know I was supposed to provide all of that. So let's just, well, let's just, uh-
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, let's just see, see if we can get things back on the rails.
And I mean, maybe ask if she'd be willing to come back and do like a budget presentation, like some of our other organizations, like the museum and stuff.
It was quite clear, but we'll make it even more clear.
Yeah.
And like I said, maybe if it sounds a little bit more hectic.
Well, it will be because we're at a choice here where we're doing our budget and if we don't budget for it, there's not a whole lot we can do.
Okay. We know the direction we're heading? Okay, um, four point eight, tender number fourteen for the airport bathroom upgrades.
Imagine that, after how many years we're finally looking at getting some bathroom upgrades. Three tenders were received. We're requesting a resolution for C M Richardson in the amount of ten thousand thirty-five dollars, including taxes, with money coming from the airport capital improvement reserve. There is money in there and that's specifically for those upgrades.
And it was budgeted for twenty fifteen.
Right. We're okay with that? Oh, it's all right, Chad?
I just had a question. Chris's bid is, is half of what the next bid is, and I'm just wondering, has, was the scope of work clear enough that Chris was able to decipher the same stuff that Jed's Construction and C B D S, General Contracting, were able to pull from it? Because I'm in the construction world and I generally know that if a bid is half of what another person's bid is, it's, it's not necessarily a good thing. Chris?
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
I actually am laughing up here because I came here for that first phone call, but I didn't know that this was part of this. And so I can maybe shed some light quickly on that.
Have a seat there for the microphone, otherwise we'll get in trouble.
Just hang on one second. Should this be an in-camera discussion? We're in the middle of, I mean, this is the middle of a tendering process, technically speaking.
This was all a tendering process. I disagree.
Yeah, and so, I mean, and not to suggest that you shouldn't clarify, but my, my point is, is that this isn't necessarily-
I think you're right.
Um, this would have been a closed bid process, so even identifying who and or what other amounts, until it's been awarded, information is confidential.
Yeah.
It doesn't preclude us from asking questions. If you see something that, you know, seems out of whack, then you should definitely ask. And so it's good that Chris is here and he can answer those questions. But I just, typically, that doesn't happen in the open session, that would happen in camera. So maybe we can move? I don't know if you want to, if we're able to move to an in-camera?
I guess I don't kind of understand why we would even take this into an camera. And a little bit of confusion on my part. We follow the tendering process, everybody receives the tender, the bids are put out, the bid was put in, we're accepting that bid. Everybody received the same tender? So if there were questions before them, that should have been before submitting the tender.
And if the purchasing agent has reviewed it and he's okay with it, and that's his job, I mean, he knows this, these processes well.
That was the recommendation.
I just, uh, okay. It just seemed like there's so huge amount of variance between them. Not so much on the next one, but-
Not meaning to be rude, but I agree that it's kind of none of our business because someone may be getting materials for less and it's up to you to, to call in about the bid and know what you're bidding on.
I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to break any rules or anything.
Oh, I don't either, and that's why I'm trying to stick firm on what we have.
You can't, you can't have this discussion at this point in time. There can be questions. I mean, we've got, we've got a piece of information in front of us. We are allowed to have questions and ask them and have them answered. We don't have to accept this and pass resolution tonight on this for tomorrow, or for, for Wednesday's meeting. The purpose for this being in front of us is to ask those kind of questions. My point is, those questions shouldn't be asked in the out-of-camera portion because they are specific to a, a legal tendered process.
What's the will of council? We're going to go in, in camera for a few minutes?
Can we table this until we get to in camera? We only have-
Let's go in camera. Take a few minutes.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's really not that simple.
This is a bidding process, I'm going to tell you here.
The typical, the typical process would be that tenders are received, they're reviewed. I mean, it would come for approval at resolution stage. If there are questions, then it would be up to the procurement agent to go out and seek the relevant information to be able to answer those questions and then come back to the table with the answers for so that we can accept it as a resolution. We're fully, fully obligated to question something that looks like it doesn't add up. So there's nothing done wrong from that standpoint, but we can't answer, we can't ask you those questions in this setting tonight. It's supposed to come through the tendering process, which is through Ellen Babbie and the municipal superintendent. So if we have questions about that, which we do, then this should get tabled for a decision tonight so that they can answer those questions and get that information back to us. That, that's how the process should go.
Okay, I, 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 I just, yeah, let's just table this. Uh, I don't want to be stepping on toes here. I have questions to-
Unless it is not the desire of council to receive more information and simply to move forward with the tender as it's been.
Well, yes, I mean, we can, we can certainly, certainly do that. What is, what is the will of council? Do you want to bring this forward for, for resolution?
I would draw my, any questions I have, so, yeah, we can bring it forward for resolution.
So could we, could we not ask the questions and then get the information? And come Wednesday, if we don't have the answers to our questions, if we're not comfortable?
So your questions basically, why is there such a difference? On the same bid that they bid on?
Just, it's, it's about ensuring that there is legitimate reason for the variance. It's not that we need to know why there's a variance. It's to know that the purchasing agent has reviewed this and went, yeah, it's a big variance, maybe I should check something.
Basically, what happens is everybody receives the same bid. If there's any question, they call in to the purchasing agent to get the answers on it.
Yeah.
And we base on what's here. Everybody gets you-
Yeah, no, I understand the process, I'm just saying that from, from, my question would be, is the purchasing agent certain that all three parties understood well the scope of the project that they're bidding on? Because a variance like that typically would indicate that somebody, either the very high-end guy or maybe the very low-end guy, perhaps didn't get all of the details. Even though the obligation, the onus is on the person that is submitting the proposal to, to achieve all those things. If you award something to somebody and they haven't understood fully their obligations, you're not going to have a good project.
I think the total work is pretty fair in saying the work to be done under contract.
I don't doubt that, I don't doubt that the purchasing agent's work was done well. My point is, is that if you have that kind of variation, typically, the process would be that a few phone calls are made just to say, hey, you're really, really high, is there something that we didn't see?
I think you guys are asking us to change our process, is what I'm hearing.
No, well, no, it's, what I'm saying is that a purchase, all I, all I need to know is that the purchasing agent has had that consideration. If he has looked at it and said, no, no, it's good, everybody understood, everybody answered the same questions, that's fine. I want to know that the purchasing agent is happy with the variance in these bids, that's what I want to know.
I can bring back the proposal for you guys and have a discussion.
Sure.
But that doesn't solve our problem, though.
No, it doesn't. Because we're going against what our process is, is my concern. And if we want to change that process, that's fine. We're open to that. It's just the bid came in, if it goes out, it's up to the contractor themselves to have confirmed that they're all bidding on the same thing. I cannot tell you why that happened. I'm sure Ellen Babbie can't tell you why that happened. All he could tell me is did someone call in, did they not call? That's the only thing I can get out of him. Because everybody's provided with the same bid. And, and I guess, are moving forward, do we follow up and call them and say, why is this so different?
No.
Like, I, and that's where I'm a little confused.
So then every time we have a tender, you have to get three things and you got to make ten? I get what you're saying, Andrew.
You're looking at doubling and tripling of overall budgets. That's not like talking about you're out by, you know, you're within a twenty percent span, it's a no-brainer. You're not talking about a twenty percent span here.
I, I realize that, right? But we're going to go and question guys like Chris and say, okay, we got four different guys.
No, it's not, you don't phone them and say, hey, I don't believe your number. You phone them and say, just want to make sure that you read everything carefully and that you understand all the details of this tender. you understand all of the details of this tender. That's all, that's the question that, that the purchasing agent should have. If I was the purchasing agent and I saw those numbers, I'd be like, hmm.
Is that not the question you all had when you saw that, though? I mean, that's the question.
And, and the reason that you do it, but let me be clear, the reason that you do it is so that you don't have a bad project. It's not about, this is about if somebody, if the low bid has missed something major, or the high bid really was out to launch on understanding what was there, then you've got bad competition and not good award, or you've got an award to somebody and they're going, oh my God, this is not what I thought, this is not what I thought this was. Now you got change orders, you got arguments, you got finger pointing, you got, you know, whatever, so it's, I'm not looking to, this is, all I wanna know is that, that our purchasing agent is confident that seeing that kind of spread is acceptable, and that therefore we should take the low bid and carry on, and not confirm that the low bid in fact understands well what the scope of the work is. It's not, he's, he's bound by his proposal, he's not able to take it back and make it different.
And again, just on past experience, this is just the craziest thing I've ever seen. Like, there, there's usually, they're fairly, but this is wildly different.
It's, it isn't, honestly, it isn't. There's this guy on more than once, one of same scope of work, unspecifically, it said paint walls in three washrooms, supply and install three electric counters, high speed, supply and install counters in two washrooms, clean patch and slick resistant coating around urinals, remove toilet base, patch floor and install handicap toilet, install baby change table in handicap washroom, prep and paint washer partitions, cleanup area.
Okay. I, I, I think we move forward with this one, but I, I think we should review the policy.
And again, it's not a problem with the policy. This is, my question is, with that kind of spread, have we done our due diligence to make sure that the, that the tender bids received are, are reflective of and are well-understood by the proponents?
You want to say something?
I was just gonna ask, do we currently have a policy that directs the purchasing agent to take the lowest bid?
No.
No, no, they just...
Okay, so, okay, no, no.
But they do make a recommendation, don't they?
They do, okay, but that's important to know, because that may be, in this case, part of to the, how, how we arrive where we're at. But obviously, they've made a decision, so that part of the process has been done.
Okay. Okay, we'll move it forward for resolution, eh? Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, um, four point nine, lift station insulation.
Before we start the discussion, may I take call contact on this?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, do I have to have to leave?
Yeah.
Okay.
See ya. Expect this can take too long, so...
Yeah, no, no lifestyle breaks.
Yeah.
We're almost in the same predicament here?
No, but there's two really close.
That's not really, tomato tomato, if you look at the differences in numbers.
Three in a box.
Twenty, thirty-five, thirty-one, no one called above eighty-four.
No, no, I know.
There's only three bids.
But there's two that are really close.
Anyways, the recommendation was for, to accept the resolution for the tenant supplied installation of insulation at Bell Avenue Lift Station in the amount of twenty-eight, thirty-five, and this is to easy restoration.
Yeah. Okay, anybody have a problem with that? Okay, where's Chad?
Chad?
He may have gone to the washroom.
Pull the fire alarm, I'll get him going.
Where you been, where you been?
Okay, four point one zero, payroll and accounts.
A resolution to accept general accounts, the amount of one point nine nine five million dollars as it relates to, Jody had made a comment earlier about the police invoices. There is an invoice in here, paid for six hundred and seventy thousand dollars and also for five hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, so that's why these are looking so high. And payroll, resolution for the period twenty-three and twenty-four in the amount of two hundred and nineteen thousand five seventy-five.
Okay, have a resolution. Okay, four point one one, two thousand sixteen meeting dates.
Um, this was, as you recall, we did a trial basis as to how it works with having our committee, the whole, and council right after, and having them twice a month. At this time, I'd also like to discuss having an additional information informal sit-down of members of council, where there is no business transaction, it's just a sit and...
Conversation.
Yeah.
Just like your bi-weekly...
Yeah, there is no, no agenda, no nothing, there is no matters of discussion, anything has to come on a regular agenda. So I don't know how you guys felt this is working, if this is working for you, if it's not working for you. I know there's been a couple of comments about the disconnect, but I think a lot of the disconnect is as it's relating to just brainstorming amongst yourselves is where it seems to be a bit of an issue, more so than these kind of matters in your meetings.
So, when we first talked about switching these meeting dates, I think it was Ernie that kind of said, some of the municipalities do it like this. He also mentioned that department heads would come in and say, half would come in on this meeting and half would come in on this meeting to kind of just give like a general update, and that's one thing that like we haven't...
We've only done it a couple times, I agree.
Yeah, but like, I think that that's something that we should be consistent with, that we, like, I know in your reports, in your monthly or bi-weekly, and sometimes reports, that some of those things get captured, but I think that that would help with some of the disconnect, and then we could have them here if we have questions, so that it's not a, you know, like a, a chain where we have to ask it to you and then you have to ask it to them, and then it gets relayed back to us if they're here, then we can just ask that, I think that that would help.
What we can do is automatically schedule a department head for each month or whatever.
Right, so, or like, even if it's, you know, like, to, you know, like, come to every meeting and just, when we, so when we do public works at the beginning, if Sam could be here and just kind of give us like a general update once a month, that that would be, that that would be good, or, you know, like Amber come and do like a recreation one once a month or whatever, just to kind of give us. Yeah.
Anybody else? Happy with the meeting schedule, Margaret?
No, I'm just thinking, like, I'm okay with like what Crystal was saying, but that's still, like, I just think maybe we should have a more informal, just sit down and gab.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
You know, not, not in the camera.
Off-site, for sure.
Just like, just, you know what, let's sit down and have coffee and, you know, hey, this thing happened or that thing happened, just, just informal.
For sure, for sure.
So when we have staff members come, that's overtime, right?
Yeah, I understand. That's why we've been living with what we need to.
Yeah, so if it's just... But, I mean, before, we would have, we'd have two committee of the holes, which would mean that every single committee, so planning and development, finance and administration, everybody would have to have a meeting before the committee of the hole twice a month, and a lot of times that would be overtime, like people missing... Well, not all the times, because I mean, sometimes you would do it at five o'clock, or you'd do it over their lunch break, and then you're paying their overtime because they're not going on lunch.
You need to be careful, because months like this where there's three stats, you could be...
What we generally try to do is if there is a big matter of contention where I'm gonna be absolutely clueless, and I will admit, transportation, that is not my forte. So that's where a lot of the times I will depend on Sam to come in and do the reporting on that. I would never feel comfortable with that. A lot of the reasons why we didn't invite them is because there was nothing, oh my God, that needed to be answered. And we were trying to look at cutting costs when we could. But if that's the wish of council, that's fine, we can do that.
Well, a person can, on the day that they're scheduled to come before council, they can start their day at noon as opposed to eight or eight-thirty.
Until you get the public complaining that we're not accessible, because that's why half of us end up donating a lot of time.
A manager, one day, to come to a meeting, we're completely unacceptable.
Or maybe they take like a two-hour lunch that day.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
Because I mean, they can come to the meeting, they can give their report, and they can leave.
We have no problem with that, as long as you guys support that, that's, that's fine with us.
I'm not sure we've settled anything here.
Yeah, I know.
Brian?
Another thing we can consider and, and look at, and then probably the dollar factor's a little bit somewhat higher and more onerous on councilors, is the fact that we have daytime meetings. If we're worried about bringing them out, bringing our adminis, or our senior managers out and whatnot, then doing it on the regular workday works. The reality is, is it puts an onerous situation on, on all of councils, so...
I can't do daytime.
It's a small investment to, to pay some overtime, to have the right information at council when we need it. I think, anyway.
Okay, all right, so...
To that, I would just point out that, I mean, we've been through the old system. I, I have yet to feel like, I haven't had information presented to me in a timely fashion, even if we've been missing the answer right here. In this new format, I haven't at all felt like there's been a disconnect between information we need and information we're getting. Yeah, the odd question arises where it's maybe like, you know, we have to get back to on that one, we'll send an email. I haven't at all felt like, I feel like I'm wasting less of staff's time in this system than I was in the old system. Not that I felt like our meetings were a waste of time in our old system, but looking back now, having had a chance to try this, I'm not so sure that there was a lot achieved in all of our committee meetings that we were having.
I agree.